Cola City Council Meeting, we're very happy that you came down to listen and participate in person tonight, and we thank everyone at home that's watching also. The meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications, Cable Television Channel 8, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It's being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m., and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Meetings can also be viewed on the city's website, www.cityofcapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Scott Gray, thank you very much Scott. As a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting, and please sign in on our list if you'd like your name spelled correctly. So may we have the roll call, please. Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Germany?
Here.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Here.
Councilmember Botwurf?
Here.
Mayor Harland? Here. Will everyone please stand for the plaid allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item was report on the closed session, please.
Yes, thank you Mayor Harland, members of the city council. There was one item on this evening's closed session, that was a performance review of the city attorney, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. The next item, additional materials. Linda, are there any?
Yes, we have two additional material items, both for Item 7H. One was an emailed public comment, and one was a copy of the draft minutes of the commission on the environment special meeting of June 20th, in which they voted to support the agenda recommendation for the mayor's climate.
Oh, good, thank you very much. Next item, additions and deletions to the agenda, are there any additional items?
Dot, there's no changes.
Next item is public comments. This is a chance for anyone in the public to come up and address us on anything not on the agenda. If it's on the agenda, please wait till we get to it, and you're welcome to speak then, even though it's not a public hearing. So this is a time to come up and speak about anything else. Then we'll go on to city council comments. Let's start with the treasurer comments tonight for a change. Do you have any, Mr. Wilk?
Thank you Mayor. Item H, I believe it was going to be polled from the consent calendar, and I was hoping you'd give me as chairman of the council on the environment, a chance to reveal the spirited discussion we had over this issue.
City council comments, do you have any yet?
I have nothing tonight.
Jacque, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if this is the right time, let me know, ask city council if we could move the August 10th, the August meeting, which is now on the 24th, to the 10th. There's a couple of things that are coming up, so I'll talk about. There's a community leadership visit that I think some of us might be interested in, it's dealing with Santa Cruz County's housing future, it's up to San Francisco, it's being put on by the Santa Cruz Chamber. They put on these events yearly, and it's very apropos at this time.
Is it that day?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the 24th through 26th. And so we've been invited, I believe, to attend that.
Madam Mayor, also would help the fundraising committee for the new library, to have that meeting moved up as well, so it might be advantageous.
Okay, great. Those are a couple of reasons why I thought it'd be something to...
So aren't people going to be gone that week? We planned that week off, so that people could take their vacations.
And I can't come the 24th, that's the other thing. So I'll miss that meeting.
So I do know that some of my staff has scheduled vacations then. Unfortunately, I'm not quite clear on my calendar yet, I'm just checking with my wife now, to find out whether or not I was going to be here that first week in August. I will tell you, we talked about the library, that working well for the library schedule. Unfortunately, though, the DD cost estimate won't be ready by August 10th. I think we do think we could have some sort of cost figures by then August 24th meeting, and given the overall schedule, we think that that would work. So there's certainly pros and cons with moving it. At a staff level, though, I think, I don't know what our vacation schedules look like, and how much rearranging we'd have to do.
So where does that leave us?
And maybe we're still back at the 24th.
For now, for now, unless we can...
Are we allowed to move the meeting up to the 23rd, and would that help the situation?
Any meeting not held on a regular date would be considered a special meeting.
But it could be done.
It certainly could be done, I'm not sure that that addresses Councilmember Bertrand's conflict, though.
Yeah, I can't be there on the 24th.
3rd.
What about the 23rd?
I'm, the latter half of August, I'm gone.
Oh, okay, so then it doesn't help, then so, never mind. Just go forward.
Yep.
24th it is, okay.
I'm sorry, council, I will probably, I will have to miss that meeting.
It happens.
Yes.
Any other oral communications?
Yes.
Who's Jacque?
Jacque?
Yeah.
Are you waiting to come back to you?
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Oh, we had a great car show two weeks ago, and this is our first meeting since then, it was, it came off without a hitch. Thanks to the chief, and it was his first car show, he survived, smiled through 99% of it, I think. And everyone had a great time, it was relatively low impact, and a good time was had by all. The concerts are moving along nicely, we had our third one last night, and had to rave reviews. And one note, perhaps a staff could, in view of emails we've received from one particular individual, and I know the vagaries of the term foreign car, and that foreign cars, in many cases, are not really foreign cars, but they come from another nation ultimately, in name, in name only, but if there's a non-U.S.A. major purchase that takes place, maybe we should let people know we're doing it. Or find, or just rethink it. There's nothing wrong with buying a Toyota Tundra, it's built in this country.
Right, it's probably...
It employs probably quite a few, you know, U.S. citizens, and yet, there is the taint of a foreign vehicle, public money. So just something to keep an eye on.
Any others, Mike?
If you have to buy, oh, by the way, the $200,000 loader, that's, that would be a case in point. Maybe it shouldn't be a Kubota.
Okay, yeah, in the past, I will say, the staff has worked to procure vehicles, if possible, from either the California fleet contract, or from our local vendors, and hence, the Toyota Tundras in our fleet. But I can understand the larger purchases, the loader, for example, coming back to council for authorization.
Kristen?
Yeah, I just have a couple of quick items. Couple weeks ago, we had the first meeting of the Depot Hill Bluff Committee, that's addressing the issue of the Grand Avenue path. We had a great conversation, it was about a two-hour meeting, we're going to be meeting again next week, and moving forward with looking at what our options are, and what we may or may not be capable of doing, and so I'll keep you posted on that. I also, as some of you know, I'm the city's representative for, or on, the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County, and we had our board meeting last night, and they revealed their community action plan, that will guide what they do for the next two years. And they discussed the focus groups, pop-up discussions, and a public forum that was held here in Capitola, that ultimately led to what they are going to be doing in the next two years, based on the feedback from those groups. And I'm really impressed with the work they did, and they were saying that they recently went to the state community action conference, and were told that the things that are happening here in Santa Cruz County, in terms of reaching out to the community, to get information on addressing poverty and the causes of poverty, nothing like that is happening anywhere else in the state. And so Santa Cruz County is really being used as a model right now, for reaching out to the community for addressing poverty, and so I, congratulations to the Community Action Board on that work. And then, finally, I will be at the museum on Sunday, from noon to 2:00, doing a volunteer shift, so if you haven't seen our exhibit yet, come on out, or just come out anyway, and chat with me, and I would enjoy that.
You can call it your office hours.
That's right. Office hours. And then finally, I would like to request a future agenda item for a discussion, and I guess potentially an update on the adding a youth seat to our boards and commissions. I don't know if there's any updates to provide, or if it's just something we should discuss as a, as a council, but if that's an appropriate agenda item, I would like to request that we add it.
Probably a resolution, maybe, to, should come forth at some point, to codify it, that we've added these seats into that at some point.
Yep, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Peterson, so that is exactly what we plan to do, is bringing back the actual, whether it was a resolution, or the ordinance, whatever it is, that actually sets up and establishes each one of our boards and commissions, and bringing that forward as a package, for you to consider modifying it. So I know the clerk's working on it, along with a lot of other assignments, but I do expect we can see that some point this summer.
Perfect, thank you.
Right now it's tentative for us.
Oh, perfect, great, thank you.
Great, Jacque?
I do have some, Jacque, yeah, so I do have some, I just needed to sort of mull it in my head. So the reason why I'm a little hesitant, because there's nothing definite here, but Michael and I had the breakfast meeting with two representatives from the SoCal Unified School District, and brought up some of the ideas of cooperating on things for seniors in our respective green areas. So that includes J Street Park, and the new coating on the run track at New Brighton, and maybe Monterey Park, but that didn't quite get addressed. So they were interested in working with us on senior issues, providing more opportunities for activities that seniors could be involved in. One idea that came up was maybe a walk track around, maybe J Street Park, that was one thing, and then we brought up the idea of senior equipment, stuff like that. Nothing definite, but they did like the idea of working together, and they were going to report it, they probably did last Wednesday at their meeting. I've received a few requests, I think all of us here on the board have received requests for updates on the mall, what's going on there, and negotiations, and if it pleases the board, I would like to ask staff to give us an update, and sort of couch the update in terms of what our general plan, and you know, what our issues are, that we have already worked on, and put to Merlingard, and so on getting, so if that's something...
You want an oral report right now?
Yes, no, not now, I, you know, prepare an oral report at your time, hopefully not on the 24th, when I'm not here.
Maybe at the next meeting, at our, we have another meeting before then.
Yeah.
Just a verbal, just a verbal.
Just a verbal, yeah, I guess, we'd like to report to the citizenry here that have been asking, and I know a lot's been going on in the background, so I think that's a good time for a report.
Anything else?
No, that's very much.
Okay, I have a couple. At the seniors council meeting last week, we discussed that May, June is Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and so on your desk, and in the back, and I have passed out a flyer about it. And if you have any place you want to post this, please post it, because it's still a really important issue in the community, and it says, "Don't miss the signs, neglect and self-neglect, financial abuse, physical abuse, mental abuse, and sexual abuse." You know, this goes on, and we don't like to look at it, we don't like to talk about it, but it goes on, and we need to be aware of it. And as a nurse, I was a mandatory reporter for, if I saw anything anywhere, but we all, we all need to be aware and consider ourselves to be caretakers of the community, and if there are members of our community that are being abused, we, hopefully we can help and do something about it. So post these around, and it's just to raise everyone's awareness about it. The library is having a wonderful summer program, and Jacque and I were in there yesterday, and we got copies of this, their 2017 summer reading program for the library, it's called Reading by Design, and kids and adults can get this, and you sign this, and you fill it out, and you check out your books, and when you check out books, you get book bucks, but you can earn your book bucks. One hour of reading equals one book buck, you can earn up to 20 book bucks, track your reading time by filling in the circles, et cetera, and then you can spend your book bucks by taking them to these businesses, and getting credit for that. So we have a number here that I'm thrilled that are participating. The Family Cycling Center, just outside of Capitola, on 41st Avenue, and Mission Hill Creamery, they're, oh, they're not here, O'Neil Surf Shop on 41st, Palace Art on 41st, Penny Ice Creamery on 41st, Play It Again Sports over in, over in SoCal, and the San Cruz Children's Museum of Discovery over in the mall, and other, and Woodworm Party Store, so maybe we can get some more also, to participate in this. And then you can also use your book bucks to put in a drawing for a raffle, and a number of businesses have donated big, nice prizes for that, so you can, you can enter the raffle program. So anyway, if you have, if you have kids in your life this summer, take them down to the library, and participate in this program, because it's very exciting. The San Cruz Chamber of Commerce is having a lunch on Friday, the 30th, and I wanted to ask any council members if they wanted to go, it's going to be at the, at Seaclofin, and the speaker is Senator Weiner, Democrat, San Francisco, young, very progressive, working on housing issues, among a number of other environmental and progressive issues, and he has a bill, Senate Bill 35, that we should hear about and know about, and it streamlines the planning process for certain projects, and some we may want, and some we may not, we may not want. So I'm going to go and listen to it, and hear about it, so if any other council member would like to go, please, please let me know, and I got a copy of the bill, if you'd like to take a look at SB 35. We had a, did we have a problem with the J-race this weekend, with the speakers pointing too loud, too loud to the residents, or pointing the wrong way, do you know? Did you hear anything about it?
I didn't hear any, I didn't get any complaints.
The police chief's indicating, I certainly didn't see any complaints, and the chief, I don't believe, heard any complaints.
Okay, okay. I would like to add the topic of drones to our work plan at some point, to add that to our zoning code, because we need to address it, whether we do it now, or after the Santa Cruz has done it, and just sort of copy what they do, or whatever. Tony, do you have any, any advice about that?
Well, we've been looking at a draft ordinance that was modeled after several templates that have been, that have been circulated throughout the country. I think the key is to look at what the specific needs are for this community, and tailor any regulations that you might want to consider, to what the specific issues, or complaints, or concerns are that are being voiced within the community. So some things might make sense in Santa Cruz with the boardwalk, that might not be as applicable here, but certainly some similar concerns to privacy issues, public safety issues. So I'd be happy to circulate the template that's been floating around, and that could be used as the basis to start a discussion.
Yeah, that's great. I saw, I saw one at the Agony Festival last year, you know, everybody was like, "Really? Really? Do we want this, you know, up there?" It was privacy, atmosphere, you know, all kinds of things, reasons for that. And the seniors council also asked us to follow AB 1250, and so I looked that up today, and that is, they amended the bill, I think yesterday, and they took cities out of it. So this is the bill that deals with contracting for personal services, but they took cities out of it, so it's just counties. So I have some information about that also, so if you've heard about that, or seen any of the emails from, and it says it was from the League of California Cities, so we're out of that one, thank goodness. So, any other, any other city council comments, city treasurer comments, city staff comments? Anything from the city manager?
I don't think we have any comments at this time.
Okay, then we'll go to the consent calendar, and we know that we're going to pull Item H, and this is a time for the audience, if you'd like to pull anything for separate discussion, you can, otherwise, we take these all in one motion, they're all relatively minor items, that to save time, we take them all together in one motion.
I'll move consent, second.
Would anyone from the public like to pull anything? And you move minus H.
Minus H, correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item H, Peter, do you want to start? We have a copy of your minutes here.
Thank you Mayor Harland.
If I may just point of record, our standard practice is that if it's pulled, it goes to the end of the agenda, as per the language on the agenda, but if we want to make an agreement to do so, I just think that we should...
There's people who...
...are maleen.
I would, I would move that we take this item, second, ahead of the rest of the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Peter.
So the council on the environment approved, with no dissenting votes, the proposal you have in front of us, but it was not an easy decision, and I think since we don't answer to the constituency, because we're just an appointed committee, the items that were brought up have to, are worth consideration, and I think it's appropriate for you to consider them. And specifically, you're probably aware, we already have a climate action plan, it was approved in 2015, that has very specific goals that were mandated by the state of California, to reduce greenhouse gases. It's in terms of, it's very specific, in terms of metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, our goal is to be 5% below 2010 levels by 2020, which we've already met, and 81% by 2050, which might be a little tougher. But the point is, is that we're already doing everything we can to meet the greenhouse gas concern that was addressed by the Paris Accord. So it became clear that this was not a local issue, but a national issue, and obviously we have national representatives, Congressman Panetta, and Senators Harris and Feinstein, that we can approach to address a national issue. To me, this was almost like a bullying activity to the 17% Republican voters who voted for Donald Trump, and it seemed to be unnecessary, especially hidden on the consent agenda. So, you know, I like the fact that I don't know the party affiliation of any of my city council members, because, you know, we don't talk about gun control, or Obamacare, or foreign policy, but we focus on things, even environmental issues of local concern. So I would, I would beg you to consider, at least, the notion of trying to stay out of national politics, because I would hate to see what the next council debate is going to be over, whether, you know, focusing on national issues. But again, ultimately, so that's worth considering, I thought, and that's why I brought it up, and wanted to pull it from the consent agenda. Ultimately, there were passionate voices for the Paris Accord, and one of them, Caitlin Atchison is here, if you want to hear their, their voice. And again, there were no dissenting votes, but again, I just, I just think it's worth considering staying out of public national issues. Whether or not President Trump had a legitimate reason for pulling out of the accord, we're already complying, so why even go there? And that's, that's my point.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak?
Are we, are we going to go to the public first, or are we going to take it to the council right away?
Would anyone like, from the public, like to speak on this? Thank you for coming down for this. By the way, I put it on the, I put it on the consent calendar, it was going to be a minor item, I didn't, I didn't think there was anybody that would particularly want to talk about it, I thought, people are either for it or against it, and so, that's why, but we'd love to talk about it there, too.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor, council members. We did have quite a heated discussion at our commission meeting, and I think we came at it, I think we're all trying to do the right thing for Capitola, but I had a little different view. To me, this wasn't just a national issue. To me, some, Peter suggested that infrastructure and public safety were our primary concerns, and I feel like this is on our cutting edge of infrastructure and public safety, because Capitola is on the forefront of what's going to happen as a result of what the entire globe decides to do. So I did feel that it was worthwhile to bring it to the local level, I think what we're dealing with is, yes, of course, a national, international, global issue, but on the other hand, I think it's like anything else, each little city, like Capitola, needs to do their part. So I wanted to express that I thought perhaps this was a small thing that Capitola could continue to work on, but to stand with all of the other communities, not to be isolated, all of the other countries in the world that are trying to save our planet. That's it?
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? And I'll bring it back to council, Ed, you want to start?
Sure. You must have been looking at my notes, Peters, thanks. I kind of put a lot of thought in this, because it troubles me, probably the same way that it troubled the treasurer. I believe I was elected to represent the best interests of the citizens of Capitola, this is my only agenda. I come here and lobby, and debate, and vote for things that I feel affect, directly affect the city of Capitola. Partisan issues beyond this are best handled, like was mentioned by members of our Assembly, Congress, and the Senate. The issue of climate change is not new to anybody in this room, as mentioned, we already have a climate action plan. As a member of AMBAG for four years, greenhouse gas reduction was always first and foremost on all of our agendas. State of California and this city have taken dramatic steps to understand, support, and embrace addressing climate change. The Paris Climate Agreement goes well beyond any of the decisions that we have had to make in this room. I, for one, am not qualified to weigh in on the many complicated layers of that document. What I do know is that a group of mayors has requested that we become involved in their campaign to overturn the Paris Climate Agreement. I will be voting against this issue based on three points. This item is a nonpartisan issue, and this is not a partisan body. As I mentioned, we have senators, congress, men and women in Washington D.C., that are much more capable to debate this case. There are 8,291 mayors in the United States, 200 of them have decided to sign this document. I do not believe Capitola should be involved, and I choose, as I always have chosen, to support the President of the United States, rather than align with 200 possibly less-informed mayors or anyone else. Finally, as a conservative fiscal, as a confirmed fiscal conservative, that is objective to spending $2.5 million on our own personal library, I cannot condone giving away 200-plus billion dollars every year outside of our country.
Thank you. Jacque, you want to speak, or anyone else like to speak?
Go ahead, Jacque. I'll speak. It's been pointed out that we have a climate action plan, and it's been pointed out that we're working towards those goals, their city goals. I look at this as an issue that says, "We're united with other areas in the United States, and perhaps the world," but I'm mostly focused on other areas in the United States, in that we share the concerns that were identified in the Paris Agreement. Many more agreements actually happened before that. It's been a very slow process to incrementally get to points of agreement that are shared around the world. Now, it's true that our president has said that he's not going to support this agreement, and to me, that's irrelevant. If the president hadn't come out, or whatever the president may have said, to me, is irrelevant on one level, and that's the reason why I'm for this. We need to show support across the nation, United States, that these are important things, not just for California, which is apparently on the leadership of this particular effort, but for every single, every single state, every single city, every single municipality in this nation, because they are actually being affected right now. We see horrible storm surges, we see flooding, we see droughts, we see all sorts of things that across the nation. So we're very concerned... So we're very concerned about city issues. I'm saying, I'm supportive of this, because as a city of Capitola, I feel this is an issue that is going to, one way or another, come to other cities across the United States. So I'd like to, for this city to put support in that regard. In one sense, we're like an island. So right now, there's islands on the Pacific that are being flooded on a regular basis, places that have been for centuries, homes for a whole variety of people. We're an island with only one side, 180 degrees. So we're going to be potentially losing quite a bit of our waterfront, the issues of high-level rise of water, storm surges, and, you know, convoluting with, you know, the moon and stuff like that, and high water rates because of rain, and stuff like that. We are probably going to be confronted by these issues more so than a lot of people inland. It's important for us to not ignore this. It's important for us to say that we are also in unity with other cities around the United States that are being confronted with this also. When we unite together with that common understanding and that common realization, it helps support the general movement in that direction. It is true that it's contentious. I completely acknowledge that, and I hear what Ed said to my left here, and I understand that. But it's a contention that is slowly being accepted. People are slowly trying to realize the consequences, and people are slowly getting to understand the issues that are the basis for the science behind this particular situation we're in right now. It's a slow jog. It doesn't happen fast. So we're hopefully going to vote in support of other mayors, and we're hopefully going to say that we understand that this is part of the process to get general acceptance. We're in a democracy. There's no dictator here that says, "Do it." This is how our democracy works. We slowly work towards getting to a consensus, and that is what enables us to do things. And so we're doing our small part. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to say anything?
Sure. It is true it's a national issue, but I think that it's national only in the shorthand name of Paris Accord, not in the body of the intent. And with regard to the intent, the billions of dollars, red herring. It was a voluntary, you know, codicil in the Paris Accord. It was not, we're not being held to it, and certainly Capitola is not being held to billions of dollars, any way, shape, or form. I think that we're not just on the forefront, we're on the front lines. We do have a shoreline. And I will not apply a term to it like climate change, or global warming, or any other such thing. Everything in our climate action plan speaks to bettering the environment of Capitola. It speaks to cleaner air. It speaks to using less energy. It speaks to saving water and natural resources. So, you know, take all the political rhetoric away from it, and it's the right thing. I would suggest one small change to the recommended action, and that is not just blanket sign-on to the Paris Accord, but I think that language needs to be inserted in there, something to the effect that, in keeping with Capitola's existing climate action plan. I think it should be mentioned, we have this plan. It is fully, you know, in line with all the suggestions in the Paris Accord. And my final editorial, no community, although we, we respect and honor the presidency and the person who has been elected to it, regardless of whether it was your choice, that person was your choice or not, we are not in lockstep with all the president's decisions. Or we would be sitting here talking about which religious group we're going to keep out of the city boundaries, okay? So let's, let's be careful with that.
Peterson, you want to say anything?
Yeah. You know, I'm in support of it, and I understand that it's a national issue, but at the same time, it's a local issue, and I don't necessarily see the need for it to be a partisan, considered a partisan issue, especially in looking at what we personally are going to be voting on, and looking at both the staff report and also in the resolution itself. I don't see anything of a partisan nature. And, and as already mentioned, we do have our own climate action plan, and in the staff report, it says, you know, there's no climate, there's no binding commitments, only that cities are pursuing actions to achieve an emissions reduction target through the following four goals: developing greenhouse gas inventory, setting near- and long-term targets to reduce emissions, developing a climate action plan, and resourcing city-led activities to demonstrate year-on-year progress. And as mentioned, we're in the report and in this discussion, we're already doing a lot of those things, which is great. So I don't really see why there would be an issue in saying, "We're already doing these things, and we want to further solidify our commitment to them." You know, and finally, in, in the resolution, the wording that, you know, the city of Capitola hereby, you know, therefore be it resolved, the city of Capitola number two says, "joins other United States cities in the climate mayor's network in supporting the greenhouse gas reduction goals of the Paris Agreement." And really, I, I don't see any issues with that. And while I understand that there's a lot of partisan conflict right now, I don't think there should be any partisan conflict in saying that we continue to support things that we've already said we support. And I think that maybe we're just in a time right now where people need that extra assurance, where do we stand as a city? And if they need to hear where we stand as a city is to recommit to the things that we already have in our climate action plan, then I think that's only, you know, that's only something that we can do that, that would be positive, especially because I, we have, I personally, and I believe many of us have received several emails and several comments from, from community members who, this matters to them very much, and they want us to, to really recommit ourselves to these goals. And so I am in favor of it.
Madam Mayor, I would just make a motion for further discussion, that we adopt the resolution presented with the additional language, perhaps number four under "therefore," speaking to the fact that all of these measures in the climate, in the Paris Accord, already existing in Capitola's climate action plan.
I'll second that.
That, I think, yeah, that's really great. I mean, I kind of thought this was a non-issue, even though, even though it could, it could get into the political realm, and it has, only because many people do not believe the scientific evidence that's out there. But I think it's always really good, whenever we have an opportunity, to reiterate our goals, to focus our goal, on our goals, to restate our goals, and this is just one example of that. I mean, I can't tell you how many times we have, not too many, but a few times, we have been discussing something, and then we kind of remember where we're going, and remember what we're doing, and what our goal is. We kind of get lost in the, in the trees sometimes. So I think it's really good sometimes to slow down and focus on where we're going and what we want, and what, what we're doing. So I think that's great. Any other comments? All in favor?
Would Joey take a roll call?
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Turmane?
Aye.
Councilmember Betrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Botor?
No.
Mayor Harland? Aye. Thank you. The next item, our general government, will go to number A, discussion of the library donation naming policy and parameters.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. So this is a continuation of a conversation that we began, I think, back in April, when we held a joint meeting with the Library Advisory Committee. At that time, I briefed the council that the regional library JPA had recently then adopted an overarching naming policy for the library system as a whole. It established broad criteria for who were eligible honorees or donors, if you will, and the naming policy included a maximum term on those naming rights that the JPA could, could honor, and then provided a mechanism where the local jurisdictions could, could tailor their own naming policy for the specifics of each community within the JPA. So as I mentioned, on the March 23rd, we had the joint meeting with the LAC. We looked at the different sort of broad categories of naming opportunities within the new library, and got a recommendation from the Library Advisory Commission. So our goal tonight is to take that recommendation, and then for the council to give direction to staff for us, to then go back and draft an actual city policy about what our naming program for the new library would look like, and we would have it in front of council on the July 27th agenda. So as a reminder, there was basically four key areas that the Library Advisory Committee and its council discussed, and the commission ultimately recommended the following for those key areas. Number one was when we got down to the most granular level of naming opportunity, that is the furniture, some of the smaller equipment. The Library Advisory Committee recommended against that, feeling like it potentially could overly commercialize the site. The second item that we talked about was key outdoor spaces. Library Advisory Committee felt that those were probably appropriate for naming. Interior rooms, the Library Advisory Committee thought it was appropriate to name. And then the building name, where there was the most conversation, the Library Advisory Committee recommended against naming the building. And under the overall library JPA policy, there's no provision, the branch will be named, the Capitola branch, but they do have an allowance that the building name itself could be, could be given. So that was the recommendation from the Library Advisory Committee. I think the council's policy considerations on this matter are, number one is, is we have a $13.1 million project budget. We have $11.6 million of budgeted funding at this point, so we have a $1.5 million gap, as I'm sure the council is well aware after our budget hearings. And there's an inherent balancing act, I think, between the fundraising goals of any fundraising or capital campaign, providing an opportunity to honor and recognize significant community members, and then also the potential that some sort of public asset is being commercialized. So those are kind of the different, the different balancing points that I think the council needs to weigh in providing this direction. And finally, just to close out the, the overall funding package, where we're going to determine how we're going to fund the new library, that's expected that we're going to be doing that in early 2018. So the fundraising, fundraisers who are here today will be talking about their timeline that they're going to work under, so that they understand how much money that they may have available in advance of that decision by the city to go out to bid for the project. So with that, we'll pivot back to that table and look for the council's direction on these key items, and where, where you'd like to see the ultimate policy for the library naming donation program to land. Available for questions?
Any questions? Yes, Ed.
When it says key outdoor areas, is there a number on those that we possibly think exist? And same question for interior rooms.
So if you want, we can go into that a little bit more. I think there's three or four key outdoor areas, the different patio seating areas, potentially the top lot, some things along those lines. My thought was that we would get direction at this broad level, and then the actual policy document would come back with, you know, the teen room, the children's room, the adult reading area, study room, meeting room, kind of the different areas that you see in, in the plan. We can go into that level of detail if you'd like to at this meeting, but that's...
I was looking for a ballpark.
Yeah, ballpark, I think, three or four outdoor and...
Five or six, five or six.
I think closer to 10 or 12 indoors.
So let's just say there's around 10.
Yeah.
15 altogether.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I was looking for.
Jacque?
So the thing of concern to me is, I realize that we look to the public for...
It's a question.
Yes. You're absolutely right. Thank you very much. In terms of the naming criteria, the thing that has been on my mind is, if someone approaches us, how do we deal with evaluating if that's a reasonable person to get such a large donation for the naming of the building? And so I want to get an idea of how this works. So I'll read the part that I'm interested in here. "Naming opportunities provided only to those that exemplify the attributes of integrity, civil leadership, and deep commitment to the library and community, specifically where the proposed, the proposed honoree reflects the spirit, values, and mission of the library in support of free and equal access to the information for all. An individual has provided extraordinary service and support to the library system. An individual donor has made significant monetary contribution," which is what we're talking about, "and an entity's financial support has allowed the library to significantly advance the provision of programs, services, or collections." So my question is basically, how would this play out? How, how would we deal with making these decisions about the integrity of a person, their commitment to, to the community and stuff like that? To me, it's not obvious. It must be a very hard decision to make. But the result of that decision is going to be very important, when we consider that that name is going to be on the library for 30 years, I've been told, at least. Can you give me some enlightenment on how that works? I have not been involved in this committee to that depth to understand how the process would work.
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Betrand. So at the end of the day, the, the final decision-making body on, on a grant like that would be, frankly, I believe, the JPA Board. Now, I think the city council is going to be the first step along the way, because a significant donation like that is going to have to be consistent with our donation policy. Prior to getting to the city council, it's going to have to work with the Friends, it's going to have to work with the Friends group. And the Friends group, I know, has two council member representatives on it right now, and so I would imagine that they would play a role along with staff in sort of a vetting process, if you will, of key donors to make sure that those characteristics are, are upheld from the overall library naming policy. Does that help?
It does help. I have another question. So you mentioned that we do have a shortfall in our funding requirements. So do you see that as significantly altering how the perception of an ask would be in terms of such a significant amount? I mean, are we trying to ask the public to make up for our shortfall? Is this something that takes on a different meaning because of the fact that, you know, we have not been able to fund totally? No. It seems to me this is a normal circumstance, but how would this sort of play in the public if we allow this to happen?
Well, I mean, I think, speaking candidly, we wouldn't probably be doing a capital campaign of this magnitude if we didn't have a fundraising shortfall. So I mean, I think to some degree, the fundraising shortfall is, is part of the conversation, sort of, in some ways, the genesis of, of the conversation. I guess I'm unclear on how...
I understand that, but would that, it seems to me it's a natural thing to, I'm sort of responding to some comments I've heard, it seems to me a natural thing to ask for money when you're on a capital campaign. That's the whole purpose of it, right? But is there any kind of thought that, you know, because we're not able to do it ourselves completely, that somehow we're, we're not meeting our obligations because we ask for a library of a certain size and a certain public, a certain budget to make that out there, to make that happen? Maybe I'm not phrasing it right, but it's...
Maybe I can jump in as one of the members of the design and the fundraising committee that, you know, without any fundraising whatsoever, we can build the body of the library. There are certain embellishments, fireplace, comfortable furniture, you know, robust teen area. There are things that we might have to throttle back on. So the, the fundraising is really to enhance our library and make it a full and complete experience.
Okay. Well, thanks for helping me out there. Okay.
Other questions? Then would the members of the public like to come up and speak? Come on up and join us. Come on up.
Everybody wants to go first.
Just all, everybody come up at once, and then you'll all be together.
Right. Hello, Gail Ortiz. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Treasurer Wilk, staff. I'm here with two hats on tonight. I am the current chairman of the, of your Library Advisory Committee, and I'm also the chairperson of the Friends of the Capitola Libraries Committee to raise capital funds for this library. So I'm going to talk mostly about the fundraising committee. We've been meeting for about, well, both, both committees have been meeting for a little over a year, maybe a little more, and we've done a lot of work. We've gone, we've gone a long way. We've hired two of the best consultants in this area to help us through this process. We don't want them to do it for us. We're asking them to guide us in doing it ourselves. So it, it's a fairly reasonable contract with them. We've hired a design team to work on our solicitation presentation materials. So we're fairly far down the road in getting ready to, to work on this long-term process. The process will last two years. It will hopefully culminate when the library opens. The private part of the campaign will happen, where we raise about 75 to 80% of the money from large donors before the public is made... from large donors before the public is made aware... The public is made aware of the campaign. Then we open the campaign to the public. Hopefully, it would be great if it was around groundbreaking, and if not, we could do it a little bit before or after. And so we're ready to go. We're absolutely ready to go. I will say that the fundraising committee agrees with the advisory committee that the majority of us would prefer not to name the building. We feel it's an over-commercialization. That wasn't 100% vote, and I think you'll hear from some people who might think differently about that tonight. But we will, of course, go with whatever you would like to do with it. But we're asking that you would please be sure to make a decision tonight, one way or the other. We've heard a little rumblings about, well, let's keep it open, let's keep that option open. We need to know so that... Because all of our numbers that we're thinking about for those 15 locations have certain numbers, but if the other number, the larger number, happens, then it's going to skew all the rest of them. So we need to know that as soon as possible. So, you know, we ask that you consider not voting for naming the library tonight, but to name the smaller rooms. I do have a list of the rooms, but I can understand that your city manager doesn't want to really go into that tonight, so I'm happy to wait on that. We can talk with you individually about it if you'd like. We also look forward to working with any of you who would like to fundraise for this library. We have an orientation meeting to learn how to solicit, and you would learn all about, not only how to solicit, but the talking points, so that we're all talking, saying the same thing to potential donors. That meeting is in the community room. It's a workshop, basically. It's in the community room on August the 12th from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning. So we hope that you will consider helping us with our campaign and coming out and learning a little bit more about how we are going to solicit these large donations. Let me just see if I forgot anything here. I think that's about it. Does anybody have any questions of the fundraising committee?
Quick question. Do you have an overall goal for these 15 areas and all your fundraising? Is there a goal that you...
Right, so the goal, the city, you know, when you adopted your, the new, or the square footage and this particular plan, we worked with the city manager, and we came up with $350,000. We realized that we are going to have to raise $400,000 in order to net that 350, because there are campaign costs involved. So we are, you know, it's in the private phase right now, so we don't want to talk about too much, but we have raised a lot of money so far, and it's looking good. So we're pretty excited.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming down tonight. Would anyone else like to speak? Then I'll bring it back to the council, and Mike Musler.
Let me take off on this first. I think that we are all at the meeting, the joint meeting, and I think, absent a vote on the building, there was a consensus, I think, in the council for key outdoor areas and interior rooms being nameable and furniture and other minor fixtures not being named, because we talked about every pencil and, you know, table and chair, and no one had an appetite for that. So that's not really a reason. I think the only place where we really wanted to come out on is the building naming. I think we are all pretty satisfied with the idea of it not being a corporate name. We did not want the building named a corporate name, but perhaps a local prominent family or, you know, someone who has contributed to the community in other ways. And that ultimate acceptance is decided by the council first and then moves on to the JPA. So we all have control of that. And let's face it, this may very well not happen. You know, we're talking about $2 million for building naming, and I will ultimately name, you know, request that only half that go towards construction, because we really want to get an endowment going for ongoing library programs and future facilities. So I think a nice target for the possible, the very remote possibility, be $2 million for building naming, with half going to construction budget or budget overall and half going to an endowment. The orientation for any fundraising, especially council members who might have access to that kind of building naming rights person, is critical, and we should not just go off knocking on doors. It just doesn't work well. I thought it worked that way, and I met a fundraising consultant at one of the meetings, and I went, "Well, it doesn't work that way. It truly is a science." So I think that keeping it open, as remote as the possibility might be, keeping it open would behoove us, because, and not so much because I think we can't take care of the 1.5 million, because I think we can in the next couple of years. We've already knocked a million off of it. But rather, because there might be a family whose name we might all know, who might be very, very interested in having their name on this building. And I think we owe it at least to the generations of families that have been prominent in Capitola to at least make that available to them.
The issue to me has been whether or not the community feels really well, very happy, and they're settled about whoever that name might be. And the vetting here, in terms of what I read earlier, has led me to believe that we're going to have that under our control, and no one is going to slip through that we know is controversial, that there's some issues that, you know, we're very concerned about as a community that would make that person a non-candidate. If such a person stepped forward, I would celebrate that person's willingness to contribute to the community. Right now, I see Capitola as a community of people who step forward every day to do a lot for this community. We don't all have the money to do that, but we do it with our service. And I'm getting the very distinct impression from my conversations with various members that they're going to work towards a person, if it happens, that we will work well with and feel very comfortable with, see that person's name on the building. The idea, whether it's commercial... I remember, I'm from San Francisco, and when Candlestick got changed, you know, I was really upset about that, because that was our playing field, and someone bought that name. I don't even want to think about whose it was. But this name, I think, will come from the community, if there is such a person. But to me, the reality of the library and a lot of the things that this community does is because we have a huge number of volunteer people, not just on the library committee, but the historic society that we have, the various committees, the finance committee, the council on the environment. That's what makes this community a vibrant community and important to all of us who live here. And so I know that the people who are involved in this respect that. So I feel comfortable with that. I really like the idea that part of it will go for future program development. I think that's a wise thing, and so I'm glad you brought that up. Someone asked me, "Do you know who Simpkins is, the Simpkins Swim Center?" And I don't. But I do know that everyone is very happy with that swim center, and I'd probably be willing to bet everyone who worked for that swim center to happen know who that person If we have a library, Capitola, that is named after someone who is that important to this community, we all know who it is. And I think the library community and those involved in this decision will make sure that happens. So I'm in support of it.
Any comments?
I understand and agree with the idea of keeping the options open, and also that it would need to be community-oriented naming, you know, a family or an individual who is very big in this community. I would definitely be concerned for the possibility of a business or company name on the building. And so I think that's something that I personally would like to see in any naming policy that we have, if we decide to go with a building name being an option, that we consider it not being a company or organizational name. But then I would also ask that, if we determine tonight that we want to keep the option open for a building name, I've heard so far that it'll go through the Friends group, it'll go through us, and then it'll go through the JPA, but I haven't heard anything about the Library Advisory Group. And I would personally like to see it also go through them, because they are really putting a lot of time and effort into this, and they're telling us that they don't want us to have that, keep that open. So if we are going to keep it open, I think it would be appropriate for us to at least go back to them and say, you know, "What do you think of this name?", and give them the opportunity to say, "Okay, yeah, we are okay with that." Or, "No, we really would prefer that we stick with what we've already said." So that's my two comments, that organizations and companies, probably not so great for a building name, and that we bring it also back through Library Advisory Committee.
I don't think the name, though, is going to go to them.
Well, no. But the Library Advisory Committee, it was the fundraising committee that requested that the building not be named, but the Library Advisory Committee, I don't think we ever really... Did we vote on it at the Library Advisory?
Yeah, that was our joint meeting.
Oh, no, up here. That's right. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I forgot that hogging session. It was just, it moved me. I almost forgot it for a second. Yeah, but I would definitely agree with that.
So would that be a motion that we will not include a corporate name? I mean...
No, I think that that was something that we had consensus on. I think I mentioned that, that no corporate or business name. So, you know, while we regrettably would not make it the Gail's Bakery Building, it could certainly be the Ortiz Family Building, just putting that out there.
Ooh. The Gail Joe Ortiz building. Okay, so that, what Christian's concern is covered.
I'm not going to support it. I just can't quite wrap my head around naming the building after anybody. I can't think of anybody that I think would be appropriate for. There may be somebody, but I just think it just separates people too much. It's like, I don't know, we need the money. We could use the money, I understand that, but I just, I don't support naming the building. I think, in the end, it might be somebody that we all might go, "Ooh, okay, okay." So that's, we'll have to wait and see if that happens. So, if someone wants to make a motion, go ahead.
I had a couple of comments. I'm concerned about, you know, how we're going to pay for the library, and I didn't think we were going to talk about numbers, because I know when we just talked about the 15 rooms, no numbers were mentioned, so I wasn't sure there was going to be a price tag.
They have some figures for that.
I haven't seen any figures for that, and I think the question was, we weren't going to talk about that, okay? So I haven't heard of numbers, but you threw out a number, so now my reaction to that number is, you know, I'm concerned about how we're going to pay for the library. You know, there's many mechanisms that have been brought up about how we're going to pay for this, but underlying this, if this fundraising campaign is successful and raises $400,000, which I feel pretty confident that it will do that, especially with the people that are in charge of it. So, but that still leaves, you know, a million dollars of shortfall, and we talk about, you know, there is concern, and there should be concern, about how we're going to keep this thing open and how it's going to run, and, you know, making it not only the best library, but one that's open to the public as often as possible. So I don't want to be closed to naming the building. I think we've got some pretty strict guidelines here that tell us whose name we're going to put on it. But also, I'm not, you know, I don't want to mention any brand names of businesses whose names I wouldn't like to see on that, but there are some businesses that have names, you know, if Lucille Packard wanted to put their name on it, I think, I don't know that that's a negative business connotation, okay? So, but that's something, you know, that leads me back to the full circle, is we have lots of commissions in this. We have a parking commission, and we have a commission on the environment. We have lots of people that recommend to us, but ultimately, all these decisions are made at this body, okay? This body's going to decide whether that name goes on that library and whether it's appropriate. And we may decide, you know what, we don't want a business on that library. And there may be some family that we say, for whatever reason, you know, that I may not know of, they're skeletons in the closet, we don't want that name on the library. But I think what we're hopeful for, if there was a significant family that had a good feel and they made a sizable, and this is where I want to use the word, sizable donation, not necessarily, "They scared me with $2 million," because I think we might as well just take it off, because I don't think it would happen. But I think that maybe somebody would come up with some number, maybe close to that or sizable. So I look at us as being, you know, I think we should leave that on the table, and if somebody comes up with a sizable donation that is worthy of having that title, then we should take a look at it. And if it's 50% endowment and 50% construction, you know, I'm not trying to tie our hands right now. I think we are all in favor of moving forward, getting this done. We want, I think, not only do we care about what the main name on that library would be, but we also care about whose name's on every room in there. I think it's significant that every room has meaning, and frankly, I'm thinking that maybe 15 is too many. I'm just, you know, throwing that out there. So, but if that's what the council's comfortable with, it's okay.
If I could speak to the number that I threw out there, I think it's important, even though it may reduce the odds on it happening, to underscore the significance of a step like that. And I think it takes a sum like that. And we have to make sure that if we do leave it open, that people know what the value of that is and how really, really important we feel it is, because that number signifies how important we feel it is, and the kind of commitment that we would want to see for someone to have the honor of their family name put on the building.
Jack?
I brought up the example of the Simpkins Swim Center, and sometimes when I think of buildings that have a name attached to it, whether it's this library, that library, but it's actually the so-and-so's family library, or some version of that, or other kind of building, in some of the cases, I think of, I actually have a good feeling about that building. It's not just a functional name. It actually has some character to it now, because it's been connected to something. Usually, part of the history is something that I'm familiar with from the community that I live in. And that's why I said that, because I now understand the process a little bit better, I feel that the people who are involved in this and who are putting heart and soul into it for the last year or more are not going to approach someone or make that effort to get that kind of contribution, even if it's out there. I don't know if it's out there, quite frankly. I don't think that's going to happen unless it's that kind of person who they will feel and they will recommend to us, that they will feel that this is something we'll be happy going forward for a number of years, because it is of that kind of meaningful level. So, yeah.
I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Yeah, I am done to some extent, but I speak to you. We do have to raise, but there is a practical side, but I think ultimately, if it ever goes down this route, it'll be something that means something to Capitola. And so that's sort of why I'm for it.
I've had a question, staff. Is there any, do you have information on some of these buildings, like Simpkins or other names, and what they're naming? Do we have access to any of those information about?
Do you want to have Bunny come up and talk about this at all? Just percentages?
I'm asking you, as the city manager, if he has information about those numbers, or if you know of somebody else that has information.
I think we do.
Hi, Bunny Tavares, thank you. There are ways that we can get access to information on how other organizations dealt with their naming process. Generally speaking, in a small community, and we are a small community, a building of this type, which will be a signature building in our community, is not named. And one of the reasons for that is that the community is so important to the health and the well-being of the library and of the rest of its structures. and of the rest of its structures, that to put one person's name on it or one family name on it would single out that person as being more important than the rest of the people in the community. And that's the reason why I voted against it when we had the discussion in our committee meeting. As far as vetting, there are a number of ways of vetting individuals. And there actually is a software program in, in fundraising circles that can be used to vet an individual. The naming rights for the 15 various locations in the library all have designated figures on them from, I think, $25,000 down to $1,500. And so we've assigned numbers for all of that. The $2 million figure was come up with, one of our consultants suggested that because of the, the overall cost of the building, that there's a formula that's used, that if a building is going to be named, that amount has to be the amount that is designated for it. Does that help clarify anything or?
It was, it wasn't, it wasn't just plucked out of the sky. In addition to that, there are several buildings in the community. The Crocker Theater comes to mind. That was a $1 million donation. There's, there was also a donation for the, the Coligan Theater. So it was sort of keeping in turn, in tune with that as far as the overall budget versus the building naming rights number, even though you might think that that puts it out of the realm of anyone, that then, so be it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
My question was very specific. I'm concerned. What were the naming rights of the Simkins Center? What were the naming rights of the Coligan Center? What are the naming rights of the Crocker? That was my question.
That, that requires just some investigation and research.
And that's why I directed it to staff or in-
And I have done that research.
And you have that information?
I don't need to give it to me now, but-
Yeah, I do. I have done the research and I do have the information. And if you could just send me that information, that would, you know, that'd be nice to know.
One of those cases, it was a $1 million contribution for a $5 million project. And so what we were thinking is for a $13 million project, it wouldn't be appropriate to ask for one. $2 million would, was more appropriate, if not more.
In fact, when, when we first started talking about the possibility of naming the building-
I'm sorry, sorry, but it's not public comment, period, right now.
That's all right. I've asked her to speak. She's, she's on, on our committee and she has a lot more information than some of us do on the committee. She's been helping us learn how to do this.
I just had a very specific question and that, that was my answer. I was just concerned about that. And, you know, I, I've used this in reference to, we're not naming the Levi Stadium, you know, it's, it's, and understand that there's a percentage of the building cost. I just wanted to know.
Right.
I'd just like to see some numbers and, and when you pull out a number, like you did, I didn't know where it came from.
It has a basis.
Okay.
Thank you.
I like to believe you always have some basis, okay, so.
And I wanted Bunny to address you so you could meet her and hear her because she has a tremendous amount of experience and knowledge and information about this whole area that we're all learning about.
Well, the city manager has obviously done the research and I will defer to him on that. And if there's any other way that I can help, I'd be happy to.
Any other questions of Bunny right now? You have a question or?
Yes. So I, I take interest in your comment that being this is a small community, a name on the building that is of significance to us, definitely, will stand out perhaps in a negative way. Do you think it'd stand out in a positive way? I mean, how, what's your, how, how do you think it would swing? I mean, I, I hear what your vote was because you felt it would be a negative. But can you give me some comments of sort of flesh out the pluses and minuses?
Obviously, if, if it was someone that was beloved in the entire community and there were no negative feelings about that person or that person's family, you know, I can see where it could be fine. I am personally opposed to it because I do think that it causes unnecessary potential for friction in the community. That's all. That was, that was one of my primary decisions. The other one is that generally speaking, for a building of this size and the cost that the building is going to carry with it, when we first started talking about the possibility of naming the building, the figures that were coming up were that it would have to be $5 to $10 million in order to name the building. In other words, the actual cost of the building would be the figure that, that would be sufficient.
Right.
But then the, the, our consultants came back with the $2 million of the weighing those percentages, and that's the figure that we're now using. But that's-
Okay. Follow-up question. To my point, you, you would be involved intimately with, if anyone did come forward?
Well, I think the whole committee would be.
The whole, yes, that's right. So you would be part of that process. And, and so that was my, my point, that, you know, to me, the people that are so intimately involved, such as yourself, Gail, and everyone else that's on it, and I see my representative on, no name would come forward that you did not feel.
Well, of course not. I mean, ultimately, it's the city council's decision, but we would be weighing into it because we'd be helping to vet the name.
Right. And I feel very comfortable with that process. I know a lot of people on the committee and I have faith in those people. I've never met you before, but others I have. And, you know, as a community, we, we work together well, I think. And that's part of the nature of Capitola. And I'm not a library person, but I have full faith that you and the other members in committee will exercise that responsibility. And if there is a name to recommend, it'll be a good one.
Thank you. I, I take the responsibility very seriously.
I can see it. Definitely, I can see it.
But what I'm worried about is how you say no to somebody. That could be very embarrassing.
I'm finding out that there is a very distinct process. It's not a simple, hey, you're my buddy, you're gonna put some money in. It's, you know, and I might have stumbled a little bit in my efforts, but I have to admit that I have a lot to learn and hopefully will be able to commit. I can't be that particular training day, but there'll be other days, I'm sure.
One of the few comparisons that I could use is, is if there is a CEO for a company that's being considered for that position, you know, they're, they're gonna be put through the mill in terms of being vetted for that level position. It'd be the same thing with this.
Right. Okay.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
I, I thought I heard you, I thought I heard a different argument out of you, which was not that the name would cause friction or there would be enemies of that person, but rather just the fact that there is a name there, like if there were other fundraising activities or something, people would say, oh, well, that Lucille Packard paid for it because it's the Lucille Packard Library. And so that would make the community feel less binding to the library or less involved in the library because, oh, that's that person's library. Is that, is that the point?
Yeah, very much so.
So really, it's not whether or not we like the name or that person. It's the notion of, of a name on the, on the library that is in and of itself is a problem.
I see it as antithetical to the community feel that we want to present.
Yeah, I, I've been struggling with this for a couple of days myself. And I was imagining myself in a situation where I've been working on this. By the time it's finished, it could be two years or more. And I finally, through the efforts of the committee, found someone that was willing to do this. And it's based on our work of networking with the community, making the pitch that we believed in. And finally, because of that effort, someone came forth. And I completely see your vision. I am, I've been working on libraries. I support libraries. I can see how it's gonna help and elevate the kids in our community and, you know, provide a place for seniors to congregate in the afternoon and read old newspapers and stuff like that, which I do. And I could see the community being so proud that they found someone to do this. I don't see any negative there.
Okay.
You know, and-
I respect that.
Yeah. And I could see the result of that is reaching out to any number, maybe hundreds of people in this community, and that effort would be recognized. And to me, finding someone of that nature could be a celebration on, on one level, I think. That's sort of a-
Any other questions for Bunny?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions for any other staff members or for each other or any other discussion on it? We have, um-
I'll, I'll make a motion. If I can get the slide back up?
Sure.
So I could make it all encompassing? I would move that the council endorsed the key outdoor area and interior rooms being named and that the council would endorse the possibility, pending future approval, of building name not including any corporate or business name for the sum of $2 million, half of which going to an endowment, half of which going into the construction budget. Too confusing? Straightforward? No?
Is there a second?
Is anyone following that?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Any other discussion?
Is that-
I'm sorry, the second was-
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Councilmember Petran?
Aye.
Councilmember Botorov?
No.
Mayor Harland?
No.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens. Another step, another giant step for mankind and Capitola.
We'll go citizen kind.
Citizen, yeah.
Yeah.
Was, was the LAC review in that motion? I didn't hear.
Um, yes.
At least that's the way I remember it. You can go to the tapes if you want.
B, Capitol Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area.
So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, it looks like I'm doing this one. I'm sorry. I wasn't prepared. This item is on your agenda to approve the annual budget for the BIA. I think Corin is here representing the BIA. This is the annual item that you do to approve the BIA budget. You have a BIA budget attached to the staff report. And I think with that, I'm available for questions or Corin from the BIA is here as well.
I just have one question. I'm very happy that all the detail behind assessments and stuffs have been made. It's, it sounds very laborious. And how's that generally working? I mean-
Everyone's pretty happy with how it works. I mean, this, very sustainable.
... in general?
Well, not the original, but, I mean-
Renewal process.
Yeah, the renewal process. And how's that go? Is there like a annual meeting and everyone's-
Yeah, we have an annual meeting in May. We elected a, a whole new board. And I'll be submitting, if, if the renewal goes through, I'll be submitting the new, all the new names to Linda. And this year, for the first time, we've actually set terms. We just, it's been a little bit open-ended, but now we're a little more official with our terms. And we had a huge turnout at that meeting. And there, it's going well.
Okay, so it sounds good participation and, okay.
Lots more participation from a lot of the new business owners, which is what, you know, Gary and I have been praying for, for the last seven years.
I bet, yeah. Because it's been on your shoulders mostly.
Yeah. And, and it's, you know, it's better. We, the, the future of Capitola is with the new businesses, not the ones that have been around for 48 years. So, yeah, it's, it's going well. Almost, I think we have four or five members who didn't pay their dues last year. And I think two of them are businesses and the rest are all short-term rentals. So, I mean, you know, going well. A lot of us remember when we did have some, you know, people protesting, I don't wanna be told what to do and what organization I have to join. And that's all sort of over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear, Corin. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Let's go ahead with the presentation.
No, it's over.
That was, that was the presentation.
Okay.
Corin, you did a great job.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. Would anyone like to speak from the public? Then I'll bring it back to the council. Would, the discussion and questions-
I would move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. C, voting delegate for the annual league conference, which is gonna be in hot Sacramento this year.
Hot Sacramento.
And Jacques, would you like to do it again this year?
I would like to.
Would anyone else like to do it?
I'm seeing Kristen might wanna go.
I will take any opportunity to go to any kind of convention or training or anything like that.
I would make a motion that Kristen be our delegate.
And Jacques can be the alternate.
Second, Jacques would be the alternate. I'll second both those names.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item D, the salary schedule, and I have something to read. Shall I read that now or afterward?
You want a quick little staff introduction to the item?
Yep.
I'll leave it to Larry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Evening.
Before you, is a, a, a resolution to approve the annual, the cost of living adjustments starting July 1st, 2017. As part of complying with CalPERS rules, we now bring the resolution to, to the council for approval. And as well as in there is the, is included with all the staff is the executive employees, which is what, Mayor, you have to read. So it's a 3.1% COLA this year. Staff, or employees in the classic PERS group will pay an additional 1.1% toward their retirement this year. And in addition, the city will increase its healthcare contribution by 2.5% for all employees.
Question?
Question.
Larry, if I'm not mistaken, the, all of these numbers were negotiated and agreed to by council at previous meetings in closed sessions, correct?
Actually, the, the, the amounts were agreed to in negotiation with the employee groups.
Right. That's, that's what I meant.
And approved, and approved in open session by, by council.
Correct. So these, we're not pulling these numbers out of the sky. This is all part of-
They're existing MOUs.
Got it. Thank you.
Last fall, legislation was passed requiring the city council to orally report a summary of any council action on salaries, salary schedules, or fringe benefits for any executive managers. Accordingly, before the city council this evening, as part of the agenda item, the recommendation to approve a salary and benefit package for full-time at-will management employees. The at-will management employees consist of department heads and the city manager. The benefit package before the city council includes a 3.1% salary increase and an increase of 2.5% to what the city contributes to the employees' health insurance. So I'm reading it because there was legislation that we have to announce these things. We don't do things in secret, which is always good. So questions, comments, motion?
I will say move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That's all of our business for tonight. So we are going to adjourn at almost 8:30. Thank you very much. And enjoy the rest of the week.